I'd like to call this meeting of the Princeton City Council to order. Clerk call, roll.
Mayor Mabry.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
McCransky.
Here.
If you would, just hold for a moment before we say the pledge of allegiance. We need a motion to approve a councilmember Jerry Newman's attendance electronically this evening. Please.
I move that we allow Councilman Newman to prepare by phone for tonight's meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk call, roll.
John, do I have Newman vote on this?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay. Okay, councilmember Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Would you please stand now and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to public comment period. Public comment period is a chance for the public to come up and speak at the podium. All they have to do is give their name, and we would limit it to three minutes. And typically, the council doesn't make any decisions or take any action on public comment. So if there's someone here that'd like to speak to the council this evening, feel free to come up to the podium, please.
I think I have a reservation.
Mr. Nelson, you bet. Come on up here to the podium, please. You just, the mic's already on, and just go ahead and give your name, please.
Okay. First of all, I'm Robert Nelson. I don't know if any of you know who I am or anything about me. I was the house that had the SWAT team at it. And, yeah. So what I'm here for is, I have some papers. I've been wrongfully arrested three times in the last three years. Every time, they dropped the charges, but every time they want me to plead guilty to anything, they don't care. Just anything. They operate on lies, as far as how I'm concerned. Jim Reed, I'm gonna start at the beginning. Yeah, I'm gonna run over in three minutes. I went to the police because my storage units had locks that weren't mine on them. Just happened to be, my wife moved out of my house that day. So I go to the police and say, hey, different locks on my storage units that I pay for, but were married. So they're community property. It's her, basically, her stuff in there, but I did have some stuff in there. They said, you're perfectly fine to go cut the locks. So I did, and they arrested me four days later. That's the first time they arrested me for criminal damage to property. Spent the next nine months trying to get answers. At the courthouse one day, Jim Reed decides that he's going to arrest me for trespassing in a public building. That's one of your, it's for sure right, that's way up there at the top. Not only did he wrongfully arrest me, insulted me, filed a false police report himself, and everything I say to you guys, I would be happy to prove anything. I have it all, if I was to break proof, I have lost out. So, yeah. My wife took me to court in McHenry Woodstock to get some of her belongings that she left. And in that court proceedings, she just decides to tell me that when the Princeton Police searched my house and the search warrant, to get the search warrant, was all lies. They cannot prove anything because what they put on the paper never happened. So in her court proceedings, me and my ex-wife, she says that the Princeton detectives took my journals out of my house, which they did, and a lot more stuff. You won't get them to admit to anything, even with proof. I bet you they'll still deny or find some way to try to attack the system around it. I'm the bad guy, and they're stealing from me.
Mr. Nelson, you have three minutes. Let's just go another one minute and wrap it up.
Okay.
One more minute.
One more minute.
Please.
Princeton Police Department's cover page, you all can look at it. A couple of things, protect property. See what else. Quality of life, my quality of life is non-existent. Oh, by the way, Jim Reed threatened to murder me in the booking room. That's torture, by the way. To protect constitutional rights of all persons, that we are accountable to the community. Let's make them accountable. You guys, you guys board members, have the proof right here to at least get him off the force. Jerry, believe this, he's off the force already. Don Cameron.
Very good, we're four minutes now, and as we mentioned three.
That's it.
What we'd like to do is just make sure you understand that these matters are for the court to hear, not necessarily the city council. Right? I appreciate you coming tonight, and if you'd like to stay for the rest of the evening, we'd like to have you.
I would like to, I would also like to say, you guys, year four, five, have the power to remove him right now, today. I suggest that I make a motion.
We're gonna have you wait and sit down.
You can vote on that tonight.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting, we're glad to have you. Okay, what we're gonna do is, are there any more people that'd like to speak at public comment period? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go ahead and approve the minutes from the regular council meeting on March 18th, 2024. Please.
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular council meeting on March 18th, 2024. Two minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye, thank you. Now, we're gonna approve the minutes from the special council meeting on March 18th.
I move that we approve the minutes from the special council meeting on March 18th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council concerning those? Clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye, thank you. Now, we'll go to the invoices with City Clerk Pete Nohmeyer.
Okay, for this period, in the Department of the Council of Finances, we have invoices totaling $56,043.26. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling $150,029.33. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $127,688.82. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $688,429.15, for a grand total of $1,022,190.56. Mayor, all councilmembers present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
The motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye, thank you. Now, we'll go to the resolutions, please.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-24-005. This is a resolution authorizing the sale of real estate at 717 North Euclid Avenue as it is no longer useful to the city of Princeton. This is actually a redo from the last meeting because we had the incorrect appraised value for the property in that particular resolution, so this is gonna correct that. So mayor, all councilmembers have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition. I move that we approve Resolution R-24-005 as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-24-006. This is a resolution allocating $360,000 of MFT funds for street maintenance. Mayor, all councilmembers have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-24-006 as presented.
A motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky. Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-24-007. This is a resolution authorizing entry into contracts with the state of Illinois. Mayor, all councilmembers have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-24-007 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the first reading of Ordinance O-24-005, authorizing a fiscal budget for May 1st, 2024 through April 30th of 2025. Mayor, all councilmembers, this is the first reading, all councilmembers have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition. I move that we approve Ordinance O-24-005 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. We're gonna have his city manager, Teresa Whitnower, who has worked very hard on this. She's gonna give a quick summary of that, please.
Everybody should have received the larger booklet, hopefully through everybody's email. I guess the only thing to add to what has already been said in the past is all the bottom line numbers have remained the same. The only changes is within economic development to make some adjustments for included costs that were requested.
Anything else you wanna elaborate on? So, council, we had a work, I'm sorry, I would ask this, is there any questions of the council first? Jerry, do you have any questions?
Uh, no. I know that there was an adjustment in the economic development budget. Is that something we're talking about, or is that another time?
No, I think that we could talk about that now. I think that's, that's fine, so. I would be glad to jump in there. Would you like me to start, Jerry?
Yes, please, please.
So about, well, it was two weeks ago, we had a, what we call a working planning session where Teresa puts together numbers based on the different departments' requests. She also factors in the councilmembers, if they have any concerns or requests that they, as well as the mayor's request. So we discussed specifically, it's a $30 million budget, and really only one question came up at the end was concerned to make sure that the Princeton Chamber of Commerce is fully funded. Their request that we received way back in January, January 15th, which was a nice detailed email to the councilmembers detailing what the chamber does and the mission and the successes they've had, was to ask for funding for $25,000 for the chamber and additional $8,000 to go specifically for fireworks. And I know that there was some discussion at the working budget meeting to come up with those numbers. Teresa had worked some numbers and she had come up with $15,000. And the request I made or encouraged was to go back and work on the budget. And we also had an initial meeting, Teresa, myself, and Pete and Janet. And one of the items that we eliminated in the budget, I had requested some repairs to a gazebo out in the tech park out there where the pond is. The gazebo was put in about 20 years ago, and it hasn't had much attention, and needs some shingles, shingling and some additional work done. And that budget Teresa had put in for $5,000. So we were able to eliminate that from the repair budget this coming year. And so that helped relieve some of that short gap of the $10,000 we were looking for. So that's where I'm at. I, you know, the request was, and support from myself as mayor, and I certainly want to hear from the councilmembers that are present, as well as from Jerry, their thoughts on that before we vote, please.
Is that gonna be an annual amount that they're gonna need every, well, annually? Or is this gonna go back to the original $15,000, 25 times 25,000?
So my understanding would be we're gonna support this this year with the idea that they'll come back in January of next year with a request that we can review and look over. So this is for just this year only. Certainly, we hope to continue to support the chamber in any way possible, but they'll be requesting again next year. And the nice thing that they, the request is brought in in January, so they have early notice of what they're considering. Thank you. I think I'm very comfortable.
One of the things that I was concerned about was that some of the money to bring it up to the $25,000 was gonna come out of the general fund. And I have a serious problem with that because that's money that should be used for city purposes only. So how do we address that?
I would say, as we try to answer that question, I would like to, to put you on hold, I have the other councilmembers also add their concerns or questions, but Mike, if you don't mind, Jerry, please.
I just wanted to say, I think that the chambers of my report, part of what we do as far as bringing tourism to town, on top of tourism, we already do to the city, I think you look at like the St. Patty's Day thing, I know there was a post on Facebook, there was people brought over from South of Furia, Quad Cities, Genesee, things like that, to bring a lot more people than just what's in town. I'm comfortable with, as long as we have money in the budget to do that, because I think it does nothing but bring more tax dollars to the city, twice that, yes.
I kind of second Mike McCall's response is, if you look at like every other city that are within the same as far as demographics, populations, the chamber, whether, you know, some people may think they're so many private entities, it doesn't do anything. If you look at the advertisements and everything they do in order to bring people within the community, they spend money, which is tax dollars, which everybody likes to get, and receive here because we need that money in order for us to operate our business. I do believe if you totally cut people off, they're actually doing good for your community and it's a vital organ to the city. They create the problem as far as the actual tourism as well. I know that there were some things that were brought in here. Princeton decided to separate tourism in the chamber a few years back. Even though that wasn't my decision myself, it happened, and I think now we're looking for the additional money that we're able to, in order to fund the chamber, to be able to do its things that it needs to do for the city. Obviously, the only ones that are benefiting from that are being the city of Princeton.
Marty, any more comments?
I support that, I think it's a, whatever they're needing, I think we should support. I'm in favor of their budget request.
Jerry, would you like to make any more comments?
Uh, well, it just seems like this is something relatively new, that all of a sudden now we're gonna start and probably continue over the years to make a substantial contribution to the chamber, not knowing, are they fiscally responsible? I mean, they're a separate entity. I mean, is their enrollment dropped or has it increased over the years? Are there unpaid dues that are left out there because no one's collecting them? I mean, is there a balance sheet that says that the chamber is in dire straits and needs this money to continue to operate? I've seen nothing like that, but yet here they are, looking for the funds. I understand how supportive the chamber is to the city, but I also understand that we need to be responsible to the citizens to be sure that tax dollars that we collect are spent wisely. So I, obviously, I, this is a losing cause for me to make these comments, but I still feel it's important to state that, you know, I'm not sure that we have enough information to hand over what could be $33,000 dollars to the chamber.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a few more points, and then we'll see if there's any more comments from the councilmembers. When we look at, it's called the Princeton Chamber of Commerce, and this is the basic backbone we utilize to make our communities a success, whether it be a small business owner, and that small business owner doesn't have to be a member of the chamber, they get to ride, so to speak, on its coattails of chamber members, and I say it in a positive way, because I understand there's businesses that maybe can't afford to make that happen. But I would just say, the chambers are basic building blocks of being successful in a community. I look at the list of things that the chamber did back in January 15th of this year, and I've got a copy of this for the two media folks that are here, that just outlines what the chamber does in a year's time, and it's just amazing. And so I'd like to do it real quick, I'd like to just give these to you right now. So I could elaborate more, but I would just say, kudos to the chamber for what they've done. They've got 12 local businessmen and women that are on that board that Jenica, the chamber director, reports to. So they've already got one layer of folks that are watching the books and making sure things are executed in a proper fiscal manner. I don't think we need to micromanage the chamber, we need to support them with our monetary donation, and I know this is taxpayer money, and we are all on this council, very careful how we spend that taxpayer money. So I would like to just move forward in a positive manner, and Jerry, if you have any more comments, feel free, otherwise, we're gonna go ahead and take a vote.
Okay, go ahead. No, I'm done.
Okay. So let's see, we have a motion and a second. Clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
No.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Ordinance O-24-006. This is an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property, which I think consists of a UTV, that is no longer necessary for the uses of the city of Princeton. This is the first reading. Mayor, all councilmembers have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I approve, or I move that we approve Ordinance O-24-006 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. And I think we could just elaborate how the city acquired a golf, and it's a real nice golf cart.
Yes, you have the photos in there. This is a donation to the police department. The reasons why, I really don't know, but it is not useful, I hate to say that, but it's not as useful to the police department as another piece of equipment would be. So if we can sell it to the highest bidder that we possibly can, they could take those funds and use it towards this piece of equipment, that would be more useful.
Very good. Thank you, Teresa. We do appreciate the donation from a local Princeton resident for that piece of equipment. Okay, clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye, thank you.
Now, we're on to the city manager report, please.
One item that's listed here is Darius Miller Rail Campus, which I commonly call a depot parking lot. Just to let everybody know that the bids have been released, or open, I should say, to, for submission no later than 10:00 a.m. to the city clerk's office, due by Tuesday, April 30th at 10:00 a.m., as I mentioned. So this is just an indication that the project is getting ready to move forward. Timing on it, I don't know yet, so that may be out of our hands. One other, actually, I have two other comments. One is planning a zoning administrator position should be announced very shortly. The person it was offered to has accepted, we've seen to work out the detail. And then lastly, in your utility bills, if you get a paper utility bill, you will start to see some notices, should be three notices, that will indicate the process for rolling out the garbage trucks. They will be here May 1st, May 1st, which means we have started the conversations and meetings to start rolling out the delivery of totes, which is not as easy as everybody seems to think it should be. So in that letter, that'll be in your utility bill, it'll specify, it'll spell out exactly what we're gonna do. It'll be all hands on deck, as I mentioned, to assemble the totes, clean the totes, put stickers on the totes, and deliver the totes, and record who's getting what tote. Anticipated the garbage trucks, garbage trucks will have their inaugural, I guess I'll call it, pickup, the second would be, the sixth, I believe, is the pickup that week. So everything goes as planned. So you will see an extra sheet of paper until it's built, that's what it is about. It will indicate where your garbage tote is set is where your garbage tote needs to be placed, or it will not be picked up. So there's gonna be some pickups along the way, but there's a specific reason why it's gonna be placed where it needs to be placed. There'll be a note on the inside of the keyon as well, indicating the other points where how it needs to be situated and everything like that, so. It's coming soon, so it's good to pick your.
Teresa, for those of us that get our utility bills electronically, will that notice be on the website somewhere?
I did, I actually made a note of that because I had a feeling Geraldine pointing at her, she would have asked the same thing. It will have the announcement online as well, and we'll probably Facebook, maybe, we'll just make sure it's out for everybody who's getting it. But just keep it, so you know to keep an eye out for it.
Actually, Teresa, when you get their utility bills, there'll be an attachment with their utility bill.
Oh, if you get it electronically, there's actually an attachment with it.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, okay.
You can hear it from way back there. What was the anticipated start time on that, start date on, trying to roll those out?
The totes or the, okay, so the week before, which would be April 30th or 29th of that week, so if you get that done on Monday, normally, your garbage will be picked up that morning, and then we will come around with the totes immediately after. So your old garbage cans can no longer be used after that, you have to use these new totes, so.
How do we get rid of the old ones?
Oh, I didn't think I'd ask that. You know, Jerry, let me, let me check with Aaron on that, because I anticipated somebody was gonna ask that. If it's in good shape, somebody might want it for their brush pickup or something like that. If you don't want them, maybe we can figure out a way to collect them and have them available for people who might want them for brush or something, so.
Okay.
I'll touch on that with Aaron, though.
I would also say, on a windy day, you could give that garbage can to your neighbor down the street, Jerry, so that's how things happen sometimes.
Another option.
Another option, okay. Teresa, thank you very much for the city manager report. On the mayor's report, we're having an appointment to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Dan Iger, gonna fill an unexpired three-year term ending on 7/30/2024?
That's correct.
Okay, unexpired, gotcha. Thank you very much, Pete. Okay, very good. So a motion, please, on that?
I move that we approve Dan Iger's appointment to the Board of Fire and Police Commission.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye, thank you. And I'm gonna step down to the podium for just a short segment on positivity for Princeton. The city is, has been hosting through Junior Achievement, this has been going on for quite a few years. So Junior Achievement is a nonprofit organization, and the local Junior Achievement is based out of the Quad Cities area, and they sent a proclamation, I'm gonna read, but I also want to just give a little background about Junior Achievement. Junior Achievement is a nonprofit organization with a simple yet powerful mission, to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy. We believe that every young person has the potential for greatness, and through our programs and initiatives, we strive to unlock the potential by providing them with the knowledge, skills, and confidence they need to thrive in the 21st century. Our research shows that students who have experienced Junior Achievement go on to have a greater belief in self and sense of purpose. They report higher levels of career satisfaction, confidence in managing money, and willingness to start and run a business. As we look to the future, we see a world full of challenges and opportunities, where the skills of critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and entrepreneurship will be more important than ever. So based on that, whereas, and proclamation that, whereas the city of Princeton will observe Junior Achievement Day on the first Thursday in April, as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the heartland for empowering our young people to own their economic success. Whereas Junior Achievement of the heartland is an educational contribution that equips our young people to become the next generation of productive employees.
our young people to become the next generation of productive employees and employers. Whereas, it is fitting for parents, educators, and businesses, and other members of the community, to join a junior achievement effort to ensure the future success and economic health of our young people in our communities. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Mavry, Mayor of Princeton, do hereby proclaim official recognition of April 4th, 2024, and every first Thursday of April thereafter, as Junior Achievement Day in the city of Princeton. And to go along with that, I would, I'm gonna just ask, I've served a couple of times in Junior Achievement, but before the meeting started, Pete Nelson, our own city clerk, expressed how many years he did Junior Achievement. So, Pete, would you just, how did that work for you and the reward that you got back in serving that role as a volunteer under Junior Achievement?
Well, it was nice to be among the peers, because I was a third grade level. And I taught them zoning for about 12 years, and they loved my class, and went to schools. But it was, it was eye-opening in the classroom, to see young minds kind of learning about zoning and starting a business and capitalizing on what the business can provide them. So, it was all pretty much in fun. It got to the point where I couldn't participate any longer because of my responsibilities, but we had a lot of fun over those 12 years.
That's great. And that's what Junior Achievement is all about. I talked to the representative of Junior Achievement over the phone, she wasn't able to be here, but this coming year, they're gonna be in the classrooms for kindergarten through fourth grade, they're gonna be at Douglas, Jefferson, and Lincoln Schools. They've got 12 community volunteers similar to Pete Nelson's of the world that come out and speak for an hour in the classroom setting, and she said they will impact 378 students through the system here in Princeton Elementary School. So, kudos to Junior Achievement for what they do. Okay, we're on to any old business, please, for the council? Seeing none, we're on to new business for the council, new business. And now, we're back down to public comment. Anybody that has not spoken before? Geraldine, please, just state your name.
Now, you're gonna find out how old I am. I did Junior Achievement 70 years ago, but I was a teenager. Anyway, the reason I'm here is to alert you to please protect your eyes next week. Hopefully, we will have fair sky. Please get your eclipse glasses, they're available at Walmart, they're available at, I think Casey's, and they have them at Ace. We will have, believe it or not, 90% cover of the sun. That's fantastic. You'd have to be somewhere in the path to get total. It won't be quite as exciting as seeing a total eclipse, but 90% coverage next week Monday. It will start around noon, and maximum will be around 2:00, and it will end just a little after 3:00. So, hopefully, you will be smart, wear the glasses, do not use your phone and think you can take a picture. You're gonna ruin your camera that's in your phone. I mean, when we did this years ago, we had special filters. And if you're really interested, I'm giving my talk of 52 years chasing eclipses at the library tomorrow at 6:30. Thank you.
Very good.
And this article was funny. I printed it out, it's for Princeton. You know what they call us? Old Princeton.
Always for not to fly over, stay completely. Okay, very good. Okay, we'll go ahead now and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
I move that we adjourn tonight's regular meeting and reconvene the next meeting in the city council on Monday, April 15th, at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Motion and second. Third call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mavry.
Hi, thank you.